And again, sorry for last night's meeting. With all the changes about being here, who should be grateful to you for getting a full tour of the board that would probably have helped me from making that mistake last week. So again, first thing now that I get to your number, is there any changes to the agenda on your side?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I think we should probably raise our hand.
Can you tell me who made the motion? Okay. All right.
I think Josh second. Who's second here?
Ken.
Our votes are in. It's everyone voted in this from last time. Any changes? Uh, do we have a group? Josh? Second. Second. Kim? All in favor? Aye. Um, do we have any other comments outside of the agenda items? Cause it appears we're.
We do not.
So we can move on to items six.
Um, all right. So, hi everyone. Good to see y'all. Tonight I've sent you a rezoning request for thirty-seven thirteen Davis Drive. A little information on that property here. You can see it's located along Davis Drive in this particular area over here. For a little extra context, this is the requirements. Currently the property is a neighborhood activity center and an applicant has requested to rezone the property to a conditional corridor commercial. And it's currently a single-family residential use. And here's just a little bit more information on the property. It's a little under one and a half acres. Again, currently, single-family residential, currently zoned NAC, requesting to zone to the corridor commercial with conditions. Um, just a little more information on the surrounding area. These properties to sort of the south and west of it are very low zoned, uh, very low residential. Some of the other properties are still in the NAC district as well. And then the other properties are in the town of Cary. And the area with, uh, that's being requested to rezone is identified in the twenty-twenty-one future land use plan as a general commercial use for that. And then sort of transportation information background on the property. The applicants would be required to dedicate land along the frontage of their property on Davis Drive for the expansion of Davis Drive into a three-lane road, uh, in compliance with our transportation plan. Uh, and then the applicants would also be required to pay a hundred and fifty percent of the cost of construction for widening Davis Drive. Um, again, sort of in accordance with the transportation plan. Um, this is a conditional rezoning, so there's some proposed conditions for it. First off, uh, just some of the uses that would be prohibited. These are ones that are allowed in the requested zoning district, but we would, uh, ask that they not allow them once they rezone. Uh, these include parking decks or parking lots, uh, private outdoor entertainment, central utility plants, uh, automobile sales and rentals, taxi and limousine services, uh, minor flex space, wholesale food preparation, um, light industrial assembly, and custom manufacturing. Uh, some other conditions, uh, they would need to annex into the town. Um, their site plan would need to be substantially similar to the sketch plan that they provided for this rezoning hearing. Um, and they would need to provide a hundred and fifty percent, uh, payment in lieu for the cost of the construction of the widening of Davis Drive. Um, and then one last condition is that we would ask that they, uh, do an enhanced buffer along their southern border with the very low does residential, uh, density, um, single-family uses there. Um, and so for that, they would be doing a, uh, uh, type B, uh, option two landscape buffer, um, which is a fairly dense buffer. And then they would be required to do a hundred and fifty percent of the required plantings that are already asked for. Um, and you can see here's a sketch plan for their site, um, just some parking around back, their main business sort of running along Davis Drive. Um, and you can see here, this is where we would ask for that enhanced buffer with the, uh, residential properties to the south. Uh, so planning, uh, department staff are recommending approval of this zoning map amendment request. Uh, it is in, uh, compliance with the twenty-twenty-one land use plan. Um, and we feel that the zoning district is compatible, uh, the proposed zoning district, uh, corridor commercial is compatible with their surrounding zoning districts and uses, um, and that it would just sort of create a cohesive, um, development pattern for the town. Um, and so this is our action item for you all. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
So, I was gonna say, if we ever presented here with the applicant, would they do that presentation?
No, I don't believe so.
So, I guess when you guys have the words, if you live in an applicant, like my biggest question, well, one, and there's really little to zero information about this. Little less, I think we typically do give.
For sure.
And I guess since it has to take out either, I'm trying to think of like what areas were noxious uses that people were, and I don't know if there are, but maybe you can see me thinking about questions about. Um, and like, you know, these connections, like especially the more lower, uh, the south side. So these would be in quite often spot for the useful connection to Davis property.
Right.
Um, cause I don't know how much that would be locked in, but it's, so I don't even know if that's on.
Um, could you maybe reword that a little? I'm not quite sure.
I'm sorry?
Could you reword that a little? I'm not quite sure.
Oh, so the connect, so I know this is the sketch plan, but it's substantially similar.
Yes.
So if you look at the southern connection there, uh, to that property, it feels like there's a lot that's pretty close to Davis Drive.
Right.
Right lane. So I don't know how much is in compliance, and it doesn't seem to be very useful for any future development that may, that maybe there's overlap.
I don't know if, uh, Chris could speak a little more to that? Uh, that all or Michelle?
Um, who believes that there is a known problem with sketch plan, something to affect the actual location is, um, so when they come in with our, uh, forums like Andrew, um, they are required to connect to these properties that are residential, but they can request later and then any computer at that time, um, even with this sketch plan attached to the rezoning, it is noted that it's a conceptual location, regardless of the direction.
Just trying to be mindful of the situation where, you know, it may not be a useful connection, so I thought it was, like, once it's sort of approved in the paper, I mean, I know that if something's changed.
I did work about the same. For sure.
But yeah, just the sort of lack of the knowledge. I guess.
And if, you know, we have, and I do, if they're making this request specific, uh, don't have change, right? So if something is, can be, or not, there's a purpose we can, uh, we can.
Yes. Uh, so it should be a Chapel Hill tire, um, car sort of servicing facility.
And there's a question, um, it is very close to the road, so I'd suggest from base on table two, four dot two dot four, that you forgive it with policy due to proximity to the road. I would do my own suggestion, that it have a change in the nature.
I don't believe residential uses are allowed in the corridor commercial zoning district, um, regardless, so that wouldn't be allowed, permitted.
I think actually, uh, switching from NAC to commercial, it eliminates.
Yeah. Exactly.
Can you, uh, but we have this stretch kind of page line, just show where the, uh, Davis, uh, so I'm applying to.
Uh, yeah, so my understanding is it's right sort of along here. So our, uh, comprehensive transportation plan shows Davis Drive from Morrisville Carpenter all the way up to Parkside Valley, and I believe also to the town boundary to the north, um, as having, uh, basically two bus lanes on sort of for either direction of traffic. And so there would be another bus lane kind of going through, um, here.
I'm a little concerned because I know that the state is widening with certain, uh, and I know the part of it is coming up onto Davis. Uh, I'm just wondering if there is, I assume there is, but there's communication between EOT and the town about, you know, your project, town's project is doing this, state's project is doing this, the applicant is doing that.
Yeah.
Uh, just concerned about potential traffic and this Davis Drive program.
For sure.
Yeah, I guess you gotta imagine, just take one of those lanes and go over, right? It feels like it is set back a pretty good amount there for another lane.
So the question is, do we look at this one off of the, uh, the surrounding area plan that is, uh, open because of any?
So it's that public rate thing that's sort of, put a pin in it.
So we're gonna do this with, should it be a, or should it be a, if this is set present as whole, the rest of the area, which is now, uh, the military, well, compared to the, uh, eastern security, is that for?
I mean, well, we go through the land use plan processes, because we discussed a lot here, and remember, I had the council, uh, and it decided to do with the, actually, uh, the GOC's, uh, so they, uh, all pretty clean, uh, so that has worked, we have. Yeah, and I think everyone's watching, but that's not, you know, the market forces don't seem to be, you know, just about any, what is residential, uh, I see your point. What, what is the Cary zoning that's all commercial, just along the, uh, north, correct?
Yes. Um, I, so the Cary zoning is, uh, just for their general, uh, business use. Um, you can see here, so that's what these are. So these are.
Similar to this?
Yes, similarly zoned commercial.
And just a bit on the land use plan briefly, so the land use plan, I think there was obviously discussion called three, but there was also discussion of those properties that try to take this drive, maybe a little different. Um, the properties that run into Davis Drive, um, are designated for the, you know, the first one is residential, but there's one in our activity center, it's a war, our general commercial area. And so, again, the properties are, actually, would be a little different than, uh, the residential, all the time.
We're going to, uh, eighty-nine percent of the cost of today.
That's what I'm interested in.
And then we know that process, that when they go to build the site, when they go to start the site, they'll submit, engineer for this, the, uh, time team will submit a process, and then what they will be able to also build for, our engineering team, town engineer team will review that and will prove it or adjust it. And for their construction plan to approve, they'll have to submit the payment of a hundred and fifty percent, pound of wood until location date. We don't know what that could have been, right? Yeah, so I guess the question is, is that the next one, um, historically, what is the number of, uh, community, uh, uh, like you're saying, the, uh, the, uh, paper, uh, so. I don't think that's a question I can answer tonight, but it, but it's the reason we get that a hundred and fifty percent is, uh, this one hundred, uh, that includes, uh, cost of management, materials, labor, all the lines.
It must be quite.
Um, I'll, I'll say this, this seems like, uh, this is consistent with the long-term, um, land use plan, so it's, uh, it fits and, and speaks to what Tim was talking about, maybe those low-density residential, um, areas, um, like, I mean, they would have, obviously, you know, asked for a rezoning as well, and I think it would be tough for a rezoning to occur in that area based on the current, look, we'll have to spear the town. I don't think this has a precedent necessarily to change that from, from NAC to commercial. I think it does fit the land use plan, so this, this would seem, you know, pretty sure it would.
I'm committed, right, to the, uh, picture of that, this DRC, uh, the industry of community, you know, the, uh, community. And people do have ours, they can do that part, or, 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 there's, obviously, we have, it's like, would, that, in, 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 certainly. I guess it's something like the issue, it would have happened, right, to have determined here the market, you know, information from the company, the project, certainly, I think, uh, how, how do you, you know, analyze that to try and say, uh, you know, certainly, uh, after the vehicle, if there is a, or a vehicle shot, uh, dying, now, uh, crossing that soccer place, it seems to always have a lot of cars there.
Yeah, this one's sort of shot, it's, uh, it's.
I mean, yeah, right, certainly there are those types of things, those martial vehicles that, certainly, without, there is, that part I don't necessarily, I have to just know.
Oh, yeah, it, it's just, we, we have that, uh, that, uh, that place, you know, that replacement here, it's a, it's a, it's a design, it's quite interesting, and it's one of the criteria that I agree with.
Well, I, I mean, I believe that because I did, it's set out by, which is certainly like, I, I agree with you, I mean, but I don't know, I mean, I'm probably, I don't think it's really, you know, you're coming up with information that would be, you know, the same as, all the projects, just, uh, do, they certainly are set up at the end of the, uh, and that's a good question, I don't know, so, I'm trying to say that's, uh, okay. And we, have any others make a motion?
Uh, please, actually, a question, this is a public comment, so we have to open it for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
And then close it before you make a motion.
So, sure, so do we have anyone that wants to comment on this? I, I, and I will close the comments.
Chairman, before we make a motion, uh, we did double check the, the use table, and then there are, because it uses in the CC district, part of the facility, there's one of those, that does, there's some discussion about, recommend they take out, they, uh, they, uh, that, 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 that.
Well, what is currently, uh, moving?
Just senior facility.
Okay, but it's, yeah, oh. Has, have they been changed?
My suggestion, Melis, is if the proximity to the, uh, populated use, for future involvement.
So, maybe that's.
Yep.
Pretty true to that, I'd, I'd.
We could absolutely, I think they would be very amenable to that.
I guess we would, uh, we'd make a motion to that, we would probably just add one of the, and, uh, if we're, uh, probably, uh, we.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have comments on that?
No.
Is there something that I could, uh, say, a little bit, that, uh, that's probably appropriate to, to, to the location?
I think given size of law, it's probably not gonna be something that's very feasible, but certainly, there is a, uh, that's, uh. So then, is anybody else want to make a motion to attack that?
I'll make a motion, it's, uh, I'll, 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 I think, uh, it's good. All right. Um, so, I'll make a motion, uh, I find the proposal, the amendment is to be consistent with the town of Marshall's contract as a plan, and I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of the one that's two zero two one, dash four zero seven, that's zero, proposed amendment of the zoning map for three seven one three Davis Drive, prezone, dash twenty-one, dash zero 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 four, property located along the west side of Davis Drive, and south of the intersection of Davis Drive and Airport Boulevard, to the conditional corridor commercial zoning district, and to forward the following advisory statements to Town Council. Proposed zoning amendment is reasonable, consistent, comprehensive plan, is in the public, public interest because, A, the requested zoning map amendment for commercial use is consistent with the two thousand twenty-one land use plan, B, the requested zoning amendment allows for uses that are compatible with uses in the surrounding area, C, requested zoning amendment will allow for development that is compatible with the developments in the surrounding area, thereby resulting in technological and employee development pattern, and also a condition be added that congregate living is prohibited.
Second? Ken second? All in favor? Aye. Posed? Tim's vote? If you hear it. One, two, seven?
So every year around this time, we, um, do elections for nominations for chair, vice chair. Um, so we're gonna start with chair first, and we're gonna do it by ballot vote, and it's what hap, whatever the results in, is that what they do for Town Council for approval?
Okay.
And so, um, if you guys just wanna discuss, we would like to be, uh, there to be discussed, uh, who wants to be chair, or do you feel like that, if you want to be that before you vote?
I'm gonna make the nomination.
Yes, you can do, you can ask, you can talk about, these are just for your ballot vote, you know, if you vote, yeah, so you guys wanna talk about it first.
Like, or, you can, if he's, if he's interested, not only for your land use experience, but I think he's sort of quasi judicial, you're, we have a parliament area, it would be very good, so I would, um, be, be chair if you were in charge.
Yeah, I swear, I'll, yeah, the chair right now. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, it was three votes for me, um, so he would be the one that you would be taking, we would be taking it to before the board, the Town Council for approval. And so the next one would be vice chair. So is there any nomination for vice chair that you wanna discuss? So if I'm interested, if you're interested, stay on my, so I can, uh, uh, anybody else? So, uh, Zach will take that before Town Council next month? Next month, and so we'll notify next month. You're welcome.
Seven, eight?
This is the time that we also, um, set your schedule for the two, twenty, um, twenty-two year, um, schedule. Oh, we're on. Have you guys been able to look at the schedule to make sure that you guys do not have any conflicts or anything with it? Um, to my knowledge, there has not been any dates adjusted, so they should be hit the normal meetings schedule that you typically have.
Um, that's, yeah, we, 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 we. That's gonna be another conflict, that's, that's really chemical, kind of, I go, do you wanna go ahead and, uh, pray to the, to the, to the, again?
Um, November, um, November does not hit Veterans Day, Veterans Day is on the eleventh of next year.
Oh, moving this year, can I have my wrong?
I'll double, I'll double.
Yeah, always with the, uh. Oh, it is, I'm, 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 so, it's all that.
Is there any other dates that you guys would like to discuss?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're. We need to approve the, uh, scheduled meetings for the, for, 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 uh, second. Second?
Okay. Okay. It's your kid. Is it, uh, you want me to get it? There you go.
Go ahead, that's all.
Uh, so, still, we're a little bit of the activate that occurred in October, we did get in one, uh, development application for Florida, for success, um, different things doing in the home center, and then China traffic traffic center. Uh, also, uh, you know, we tried for, we also planned for approval, and, yeah, and we're not, and it's coming up local, uh, there's, um, October. Um, also didn't want to know, uh, that we should, the board is aware, um, that we did, uh, receive the, uh, the, um, here, the planning association with Carolina chapter, uh, that was for our, that was presented, uh, to the town, at the last, um, day. Uh, a couple of other things to note, uh, we released a report of housing, our, uh, actually, some months ago, um, responses were due on October first, and that is because in the second phase, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, consultation, uh, we did not get in many proposals, so we just, uh, reissued that, uh, after the first round went out, um, talked to some firms to kind of figure out why they did not submit it, what load capacity, uh, as an issue for all of them, uh, so we reissued it with more flexibility as to starting the project schedule, uh, we're hoping that it is successful, and perhaps the first, and then this time, uh, our, uh, few responses started to, uh, in December, uh, so hopefully we'll be able to pick off, um, something, currently next year, um, we'll have to wait and see. I believe, uh, three of you, um, have signed up for the land use top ten, uh, top, that the school government is closing, um, begin, that's November eighteen, through two before. Um, if any of you are interested, just remind them that there is still, uh, time to sign that, if you'd like to, uh, that is all I got.
Uh, one time, Ken, just one day, for two before?
This is one day, one day.
Ready to see everyone always?
The, 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 to explore with the current service program. Particularly for town staff and, and, employees. So that part is really taking on, uh, two phases. The first will be a survey of, um, those employees, just give it something that they were, are actually interested in, and, and, and if so, you know, what might be of interest to them, you know, and, and, and what amounts would be valuable. So trying to assess, you know, is there interest? And then if there is, what kind of information, number of people can, yeah. And then once we have that information in, it turns out that town council will be able to decide that they're not, or, 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 or not. Thank you.